I, you know what, I'll be honest, I'm not comfortable being this close to you.
Is that why?
I feel like the gymnastics are gonna get crazy here.
Or there are other reasons.
Thank you, sir.
Sorry.
We even got fancy Kleenexes.
Kleenexes when they give.
Gentlemen. One last. I think it's Kleenexes.
Is it?
I gotta piece these.
I was always searching for Kleenex.
You're getting excited about your grandmother.
It is a cute.
I've been talking about Kleenex.
I finally got a lot of these shirts.
Thank you.
I waited you. When, uh.
Wow, fancy.
Mr. Show's when you sign it.
I deleted it.
Why?
He put a top city. Go save a project.
Subsidies, subsidies.
Ladies in my ward and, um, I will.
Well, I wanted them to know. This is a track. I got two. This is kind of a track.
It'll be better.
Where's your sidekick? All the women just sent up.
Who? Jay-Z? Where is he?
Here he comes.
Where'd we get all these fancy, fancy ink pen things?
I know.
Yes.
Eight pens we got.
He must have too much money in his budget.
Chair, recall the May 2nd, 2023 meeting of the City Council order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Here.
Alderwoman, Alderwoman Purchase.
My microphone, here.
Alderwoman De Senso.
Present.
Alderman McMinimman.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mayor Langfelder.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, Aquorum is present.
Chair, motion to allow Alderman Fulgenzie to participate via phone.
So moved.
Second.
They're moving second and in discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, say nay. Motion carries. Uh, we do have a couple of proclamations to present, uh, and then also for City Council members that are leaving, we'll have a presentation and then a presentation from Bill McCarty. So first, we'd like to call up Blessed Sacrament Seventh Grade Volleyball Team.
I know, the most fun.
So, uh, this is my alma mater, Blessed Sacrament, and, uh, I think all my brothers and sisters, thirteen of them, or twelve, I'm the thirteenth. Actually, anybody who's counting, uh, Communications Director Frebert is thirteen, I'm number six. But, uh, really, this, uh, people ask me all the time, what's the, uh, since I'm leaving office, what's the best part of the job? And it's recognizing our young people, and it's about meeting people through the office. So I wish the best of luck to, uh, Mayor-elect Buscher in that, but she'll recognize that. She probably already has, as well as the other elected officials, because that's what it's all about, serving you. And we really appreciate the Blessed Sacrament Girls Volleyball Team coming up and sharing their celebration with us. It says, whereas founded in nineteen twenty-four, Blessed Sacrament School has a strong commitment of providing faith-based education that nurtures the whole student body, mind, and spirit. And whereas today, we are here with residents from our community and members of the Blessed Sacrament Family to celebrate and recognize a group of young women for their athletic accomplishments during their twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three volleyball season. And whereas the Blessed Sacrament Bruins Seventh Grade Girls Volleyball Team showed determination, teamwork, and strength finishing their twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three season undefeated with thirty wins and zero losses. And whereas the roster consisting of Lucy Ambrose, Samaria Bakamba, hope I spelled that or pronounced it right, Hannah Barsik, Karis, Karis Caton. Karis?
Karis.
Karis Caton, sorry. Maybe I'll go back to, uh, school. Grace Decatur, Natalie Jacobs, Lexi Cotner, Addie Maddox, Addison Nixon, Mary Kate Ozert.
Ozert.
Ozert. Yep, that's what it sounds like, Ozert. Kylie Petropolis, Caitlin Sobie- Sobieski. Sobieski?
Yeah.
And Lucia Thompson. Lucia, Lucia Thompson. That was my second guess. Worked together using their individual skills and talents to create a dynamic and unified team. And whereas the Seventh Grade Bruins ended their season with a defining roar, defeating Bloomington Corpus Christi twenty-five to twenty-one and twenty-five to sixteen in the Illinois Elementary School Association, IESA, Class seven-two-A state championship, bringing home not only the first-place title for BSS, but doing so at the, doing so at their first state tournament appearance ever for volleyball in the school's history. And whereas these young athletes loved the game and individual skills were brought out through the mentoring and coaching by volunteer staff, including coaches Jessica Barsik, Patty Nixon, and Heather Sobieski. And whereas we also recognize BSS Principal Nicole Coolman, Pastor Reverend Jeff Grant, Athletic Director Jeffrey Krieg, and Blessed Sacrament Faculty and Administration for their constant guidance and these student athletics or athletes. And whereas we also thank the parents and guardians and other family members who worked together to ensure these young women not only made it to practices and games, but ensured these students succeeded in the classroom as well as on the court and continued their journey of a faith-field-centered life. And whereas we congratulate this young team on this great achievement for their first-place victory and an undefeated season together as a community, we look forward to watching this team their eighth-grade year. Now therefore, I, James O. Langfelder, Mayor of the City of Springfield, Illinois, together with Springfield City Council and our residents, do hereby proclaim that Tuesday, May 2nd, 2023, shall be Blessed Sacrament Girls Volleyball Day in the City of Springfield and call upon all citizens to recognize the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three Blessed Sacrament Bruins and their coaches for this great achievement. Congratulations.
Thank you. These girls worked really hard this year, and it really showed on and off the court. And we want to thank the parents and the staff at BSS for letting us go on this fun little ride that we're on. Thank you.
Next, we'd like to, uh, recognize Recycled Records for their hundredth anniversary, or over that, I should say. But, uh, they've recently, uh, closed up shop, I do believe. I went in there Saturday to present the proclamation, but we thought it'd be more appropriate to have them here at City Council to recognize their great endeavors. So if you'd come forward, we'd appreciate it. And just so you know, Gary gave up the Cardinals baseball game to be here tonight, right?
A great loss this year.
Personally, I didn't think it was much of a loss. Coming from a Cubs fan. I can say that now, since I'm not running for election again. So it reads, whereas in nineteen ten, Joe and Ida Katz opened Springfield Furniture Company in Springfield, Illinois. Little did they know, it would become an iconic location in Mr. Lincoln's hometown that would help shape the vibe and spirit of downtown Springfield. And whereas over the decades, Springfield Furniture became a true family business when ownership passed to their daughter, Grace, and husband Wilbur Kessler, and eventually then to the Kessler's sons, Mark and Gary. And whereas Mark and Gary always helped in the store, but began selling used records on the balcony at the back of the store in the early nineteen eighties, over time, they moved upstairs and what began as a portion of their sales area grew. And eventually, they overtook the entire second floor. And whereas the downtown store evolved from furniture into recycled records, a one-of-a-kind destination with more than seventy thousand vinyl records, CDs, and cassette tapes, musical instruments, stereo equipment, plus many other unique items that became a mecca for locals, music buyers, and touring musicians, including Al Jardine, Weird Al Yankovic, Bun Carlos, and George Frayn. And whereas through their knowledge and engagement with customers and other area businesses, it wasn't only the items that they sold that drew people downtown, it was Mark and Gary themselves that kept people returning. And whereas over the decades, Recycled Records experienced the triumphs and tribulations as business owners. And even though we do not want to see these doors closed, we understand everyone has their last song, and this one is definitely bittersweet. And whereas I stand here today, not only as mayor, but also as a customer and someone who has great admiration for Gary, Kathy, and the entire Kessler family, we know a big part missing from today is Mark, but he is smiling down as the City of Springfield says, thanks for the memories. Now therefore, be it resolved, I, James O. Langfelder, Mayor of the City of Springfield, Illinois, along with the Springfield City Council and our residents, do hereby proclaim that Saturday, April 29, 2023, shall be Recycled Records Day in the City of Springfield and call upon all residents to celebrate the Kessler family for what they have done for Springfield and the many memories they have brought for generations.
Thank you all so much. Let me tell you why Recycled Records started. My brother and I both wound up back here in nineteen eighty. He was looking flea markets and records weren't selling well. So one day, our mother looked around and she said, why don't you throw them up on the balcony? Maybe somebody will buy one. And that's how and why Recycled Records started. Now, the, the outpouring of love and respect during this month of April has been absolutely unbelievable. Who would have ever thought that this little store would become known nationally and internationally? This last week, families came down from Chicago, record stores came from north, northwestern Indiana, and one guy drove down from Mackinac Island on the Upper Peninsula. It has just been an awesome ride. I can't tell you how much I appreciate it, how happy we've been to be a part of Springfield. And, you know, we've tried to live up to our slogan. Well, Recyclers Records slogan, would you like us if you could find us? Springfield Furniture's slogan was always, our customers are our friends. And I have tried as hard as humanly possible to live up to that. So thank you all again. It's, it's just amazing.
So even though we have a, uh, meeting to conduct, we'd like to, uh, give our thanks and, uh, congratulations to those that going off the City Council that has served our community well. And we'll just go around in order. First, Alderman Fulgenzie's joining us by phone, but, uh, he's sent his best representatives and his, uh, daughter-in-law and, uh, I think grandchild and great-grandchild, right? Oh, boy, look at this one. And what's her name?
Quinley.
Quinley.
Yeah.
And Alderman Fulgenzie, he's done a great job representing, uh, Ward Four. Uh, one of the accomplishments I remember is the, uh, of course, the Peoria Road Tiff and moving forward in that direction and always promoting Route sixty-six and the North End. And it reads, uh, government of the people, by the people, for the people. Abraham Lincoln, in appreciation for his public service, the City of Springfield commends John Fulgenzie and the Fulgenzie family for his commitment, sincerity, and dedication to our residents, neighborhoods, and community. Alderman Ward Four, two thousand fifteen to twenty twenty-three. Congratulations. True family tradition, they, he, they're as soft-spoken as John is. But when they say something, when he says something, people listen.
Say it again, John, if you'd like.
Next is Alderwoman De Senso. And Alderwoman De Senso, uh, I think we probably agreed eighty-eight percent of the time, maybe ninety percent.
Maybe seventy-five.
See, we can't even agree on that. But actually, uh, she's always been an advocate for the residents. I think everybody that watched City Council meetings knew that, and the importance of, uh, you know, taking care of the inner city, which we appreciate. And, uh, most recently, the crowning achievement, of course, is the Shields Sports Complex, which the city has wanted for decades. So we appreciate her partnership in bringing that to the forefront and making it happen. And so again, it reads, uh, government of the people, by the people, for the people. Appreciation for her public service, the City of Springfield commends Alderwoman Kristen De Senso for her commitment, sincerity, and dedication to our residents, neighborhoods, and community. Ward Six, Alderwoman from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-three. Congratulations and thank you.
Stay up here. When I was sworn in at this podium six years ago, this guy, you couldn't even see him. He was, came up to about here. And that's the sacrifice you make for public service, is missing out on a lot of things and not being there for everything. And I just want to thank my son, um, for supporting me always, being my biggest fan, my biggest cheerleader. And thank everyone in this room and everyone behind me, because you meet the most wonderful people when you get involved in public service. So whether you realize it or not, you are making a difference one way or another. He might disagree. But thank you all for putting up with me. Thank you for listening, and thank you for the ones that show up every week. I appreciate you.
And next, we have Alderman Joe McMinimum. And, uh, Ward Seven, I think Ward Seven actually started where I grew up, and then it's kind of migrated to the West. But Alderman McMinimum is best known for really, uh, holding people's attentions to the pension obligation we have to provide the retirements for our first responders, which we really appreciate it. And even though it's, uh, challenging, because I used to serve on the county board, and I took votes that were twenty-nine to one, believe it or not, I can understand the difficulty sometimes when it's nine to one or whatever the case may be. Uh, but that shows a lot of character and moral values that we really appreciate being on this council, because it's not about always agreeing. It's about getting to the best solution possible, and you've really embodied that. And some of your great accomplishments that come to mind, of course, the Hy-Vee, uh, that sat, you know, vacant for, I think, decades, and then the Pinewood Apartments that are coming to the forefront, uh, this year. So we appreciate all your efforts in that. And it reads, government of the people, by the people, for the people. I keep repeating it, because that's my favorite Lincoln saying. In appreciation of his public service, the City of Springfield commends Joe McMinimum for his commitment, sincerity, and dedication to our residents, neighborhoods, and community. Ward Seven Alderman, twenty-eleven to twenty twenty-three. Congratulations.
Well, first, my wife Lynn's watching from home. This is meeting number six hundred and fifty-three. She's been there every meeting. I really appreciate it, Lynn. Love you greatly. Our daughter's grading, uh, high school news, uh, high school papers over in Champaign, as well as her husband. And so they cannot be here. Uh, being a teacher comes first. And, uh, our son is writing a business article up in Chicago with a, uh, nine-month-old child, so, and his wife, so, uh, they can't be here. Thank you to city employees from top to bottom and from bottom to top. Uh, I was working last night, this morning. Why? Because a constituent called because of a downed tree on, uh, twenty-one-hundred block of South State Street. Jennifer, I didn't call you about it, because, um, I didn't have your email. But any rate, you know, Public Works Dispatch Office, they're ready to do the job. They were there that night, supervisor first, and then they cut down the whole tree this morning. You know, that's the kind of response we get from city employees. So again, thank you, city employees, directors, from top to bottom, from bottom to top. You know who you are. You, uh, serve beyond the call of duty too often, too many times, and it's appreciated. I want to thank the media. Um, we've got a reduced media compared to twelve years ago. Steve Speary, you're here almost whenever you can be, because you're covering multiple beats. We used to have a dedicated one-beat person for, uh, for the City Council, and now you're covering about four beats all to yourself. And then Dave Dahl can't be here tonight. He's a regular. TV twenty, you're always here. Um, I'll say this about TV twenty. I've got forty reporters speed-dialed, because that's how many reporters we've gone through in twelve years. Um, you know, we, we get what we can, and, and, uh, so thanks for the coverage, TV twenty to city government. And then maybe most importantly, uh, thanks to the Langfelder family. You've made a generational contribution to the City of Springfield, a generational contribution, and all the family members pitched in. And it's, it's really significant and notable and, um, historic even. And so Mayor Langfelder, you're leaving the city, uh, much better than the way you found it, and every mayor hopefully can say that. And we, we wish Mayor Buscher the very best to continue the tradition of always improving things. This city is historically great and has vast potential remaining. And I think my wife and I, we've lived in a total of six different wards. We've found friendship in every ward wherever we've lived. So sorry for the long words, but, uh, um, I think I covered everything. It's great sitting next to all the aldermen and women. You know, uh, alderpersons don't get enough credit for the twenty-four-seven job they do. So, uh, you know, it's that old saying, be careful what you ask for, you might get it, for the new alderperson. So, um, all the best and, uh, thanks for this.
Thank you. Thank you. Then I'd like to call up Deputy Treasurer, Colleen Fager, for a, uh, special presentation to outgoing Treasurer, Misty Buscher.
And I'm a crier. Sorry. So this is.
Don't cry.
You're gonna make your dad cry.
This is business impersonal for me. Thank you for bringing me on four years ago. I could not have asked for a better mentor. You're an amazing person. You're an amazing public servant. And I can only hope that I can live up to what you've done. So on behalf of the City of Springfield employees, especially the treasurer's office and the taxpayers of Springfield, I'm honored to offer you this plaque for your outstanding public service for the last eight years.
Well, I am surprised. Um, thank you all. Thank you for all of the aldermen who are existing and outgoing, aldermen and alderwomen, for your service. Thank you, Mayor Langfelder, for your service as well. It is an adventure every day for all of us, and we have to work together to make the ball move forward. Welcome to our new alderwoman who's sitting in the front here. So just thank you all.
And new alderman.
Oh, new alderman, new alderman, Ward Four, my alderman's right there.
Are you gonna stay there? Well, the mayor always said he lets his director speak, and so I've been waiting for eight years to do this. So I get my moment. For those who don't know me, I'm Julia Frebert, I'm the Communications Director for the City of Springfield. There are others who simply refer to me as the mayor's sister, and that's a title I'm very proud of. Mayor Langfelder has been following city government since nineteen seventy-nine, when our father, Ozzy Langfelder, was elected Streets Commissioner under the previous form of government. I'd like to state for the record, I think you were eighteen and I was two, so I'm just clarifying. But why is that important? Um, following city government for that long gives someone knowledge that can never be taught. It cannot be fully grasped reading stories. You are witnessing everything firsthand and in real time. He witnessed the change from commission form of government in the capital city to the strong mayor-aldermanic form due to the voting rights lawsuit. He watched as this ten-person horseshoe developed today's code of ordinances. When our father left office, his love for local government did not stop. And stepping, instead of stepping away, he stepped up. As he was cutting his teeth on the county board, he still had a watchful eye to everything occurring at City Hall. He saw, under other mayoral leaderships, the city's sell-off Health Department and, uh, Animal Control. He gave away the city's Robin Roberts Stadium in Chamberlain Park and Lincoln Greens. He watched CWLP lose out because of the power marketing debacle and the win contracts, and even the struggle of making its own payroll. He watched and assessed, and when he became mayor in twenty fifteen, following that, city government mattered. He came in as mayor when the financial shape was improving, but it wasn't completely stable. With his understanding of city operations and professional experiences, he was able to lead the City of Springfield through two years without a state budget, the federal government shutdown, and the COVID nineteen pandemic. Despite facing all of this in only eight years, as mayor, the City of Springfield is in the best financial shape it has ever been. He has a vision for the city. He didn't just cast the deciding vote to move the Salvation Army to the former Gold's Gym to create a community center. That move allowed Horace Mann, a large Springfield employer, employer, to expand their footprint and open up the opportunity for the hub transportation center to be built. That moved the SMTD buses off Capitol Avenue, Greyhound buses back downtown, and eventually Amtrak will all be operating at one location. When coming into office in twenty fifteen, there was still a debate on having the rail traffic all moved on to Third Street Track. But Mayor Langfelder knew that would be devastating to Springfield. He pushed to ensure the Tenth Street Rail consolidation would be done. Together with Public Works and city partners, more underpasses have been completed, and the Tenth Street Rail consolidation will be done by twenty twenty-five. He fought for Tiff extensions, because without those extension projects, but without those extensions, projects like the Bicentennial Plaza, the Kidz M, the center at five oh one that houses the Chamber of Commerce, the downtown Enos Park YMCA, and Poplar Place redevelopment would be non-existent. He saw the need for improved safety and better coverage for the residents, and Springfield will break ground on two new fire stations. In another sixty or so days, another groundbreaking will occur for the Shields Sports Complex. He pushed for the backup water source, forcing a record of decision for Lake Two by early twenty twenty-four, the need for bringing a university presence back downtown, and his passion for housing and developing the east side caught the eye of Bloomberg City Harvard leadership, who selected Springfield as one of seven cities to focus on whole block restoration. I can go on and on, but I know there's a meeting everyone is really anxious to get to. So on behalf of your directors and the residents of Springfield, we want to say thank you. We wanted to present you with a token of gratitude, but what do you give someone who personally bought the Route sixty-six Bel Air Seal? I don't know. So this will have to do. So this will have to do. Just highlight some of your milestones as you reach on your own incredible journey. As Dan would say, "At a boy mayor, you have done well."
Picture of Juan.
Darn it, I'm disappointed. It's not Juan. Well, thank you very much. It's been a true honor to serve the public, and it wouldn't be possible with all you here and beyond these walls, but most importantly, the ones around the horseshoe that really make it happen. And again, the city workers and especially our first responders, we appreciate what you do each and every day to serve us, to make our community better. So thank you very much. And thank you, Director Frebert. We really appreciate what you've done through these years and all the directors and the chiefs to really put me in a better, you know, light. And that's what it's all about. How do we lift up and lift everybody up, just not from the top, but from the bottom on up? So we really appreciate everybody's efforts in doing that. So thank you very much. Now for the downer of the meeting. No, I'm teasing. Director McCarty's done a fantastic job. And you know, when you run for office, people, well, Mayor Lex Busher could relate to this. He'll say, which directors are you keeping? Which ones you getting rid of? Well, when I came on, Director McCarty was one of those that some of my supporters didn't want to keep on. And I'll share the story with you, and they said, well, why did you keep Director McCarty on? I said, well, one is things are going in the right direction, and that's where you hope they go. But if I would have let Director McCarty go and they went south, they would have said, why'd you get rid of Director McCarty? So that's why you keep him, because not only for that, but he is a great director. He's led the city well during the Great Recession, during the, you know, state shutdown or near shutdown, you know, going with two years without a budget, and then also with our own pandemic. So we appreciate the good work you've done and continue to do to the very end. So thank you very much. And he will give a presentation on the financial report.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, today's kind of special. It's my 12-year anniversary today.
Wow.
May 2nd, 2011, I walked into City Hall with Mayor Houston. So it's bittersweet for me as I give my final presentation to council. But before I start, there's one more person that we have to wish a happy retirement to, and that is Julie Zogardar. Julie, you want to step up here for a minute? Now, she did not want to come here. So as a birthday present to me, my birthday is actually this Friday, the 5th. She's gonna retire on the 5th. So happy birthday to me, I suppose. But no, Julie has been here for 34 years, and I think most of the people in this room that have worked with her, who have listened to her, who have had to, in some cases, deal with her, understand just how important she is. I cannot overstate her importance to the city or to me in my 12 years here.
I trained him, let's be honest.
Let's, I don't know if I'd go that far. See what I've had to deal with for 12 years?
I have, I'm gonna tell this one story.
All right, step on the mic.
The Office of Budget Management is not allowed in the budget database.
We're not talking about that.
Oh, yeah, we are. His first week here, he got in the budget database and clicking around and not reading the directions, deleted 100 records.
Happy birthday, Bill.
Why did I bring you here again? So yes, it's true, I've not had access to the database in 12 years. But that's okay. That's why I have good staff like Julie to help me and make me look good. And that's what her and her other colleagues in the OBM have done over the last 12 years. Certainly, we are in the best financial position we've ever been in, but that's not me. That's a whole team of people. It's city council members, yourselves, your predecessors, Mayor Langfeller, Mayor Houston, people who came before you, and certainly all the people that work here at the city. So I thank them very much for all of their support over 12 years. And with that, I will give a very brief presentation.
Is that possible?
I'll tell you what, alderman, would you like me to get Chief Blough up here to do it? I'm happy to do it. He's ready. That's what I thought. I love Chief Blough. He makes me look good. I got the wrong presentation. If I could get the right one, that'd be great. Hey, this isn't, this is not me. I mean, I can try and give this presentation, I'm not sure what I'd be talking about.
I could probably give that presentation.
Ah, there you go. Alderwoman DeSento, please, come on down. So I told you when we did the budget that we would end, we were predicting we'd end with a fund balance of about $57 million. And I think, I know Alderman Donilon remembers this for certain because he's brought it up. At the time, I told you, though, that if we didn't get a recession and we didn't see a slowdown, I thought it would be $60 million or potentially in excess of $60 million. And that is exactly what has happened. We ended fiscal year, this is unaudited, but it's gonna be pretty close. We ended last fiscal year, fiscal year '23, at the end of February, with a fund balance of $63 million. That does not, I repeat, does not include ARPA funds. That is pure corporate fund. So here's the history of the KPIs we've always used. Back in FY 11, we were at negative $2.6 million at the end of the year in cash. This year, we ended at $46 million positive. Our average daily balance back then in FY 11, 2011, was negative $3.5 million on a daily basis. This year, we ended with $37.3 positive million on a daily basis in the corporate fund. And as we just talked about, the fund balance back then was $8.3 million. We ended with a record $63 million in this most recent fiscal year. Certainly, a lot of work has been done, and as I already mentioned, that is something that is a testament to the work of everybody in this room, and certainly the staff members who are not in this room and your predecessors who are not in this room. So congratulations to all of those people. This is a graphical representation of the fund balance. As you can see, it grow over time. Back from the Great Recession, what was a paltry $2.6 million, growing all the way to $63 million. With the budget that was put in place, you see a big drop down to $29 million. But understand what that means. That means we are doing a lot of good things for the people of Springfield, including two things that we'll be cutting ribbons on tomorrow, two new firehouses tomorrow. And then a third one will be coming down the line. It's $23 million. $23 million, all because we have been able to improve the financial conditions here in the city of Springfield. And there is some ARPA in that. I'm not going to deny it. I think we budgeted $4 million out of the $23 million for out of ARPA. So the PNL, this is just updated. You got this at budget time. But as you can see in the one, two, third column, fiscal year '23 estimate unaudited, ending at $63 million in fund balance, that is a 43.4% fund balance. Next year, the maintenance next to it, that is assuming we didn't do the firehouses and other major projects, equipment and all that that we've got in the budget. We would have had, it was just what we call a maintenance budget, we would have had a $2.5 million surplus budget, which would have ended next year with a fund balance of $65 million or 46%. Column next to that includes all of the corporate fund stuff, like the firehouses and everything else, so we're looking at a $29 million fund balance. It says 16.4%, but understand that's off of a bigger base, off of the maintenance base of around $145 million. It's actually a 20% fund balance that's budgeted, ending next year. So certainly, we are leaving you all and your successors and Mayor Lex Busher with a good fiscal picture, and we hope to see that you all are able to take that and do some good things with it, certainly. Of course, there's, I can't leave without a caveat. This is the famous pension slide the mayor referenced this earlier. This has always been, Alderman McMiniman has planted his flag on this particular item, and he's not wrong on that. It has always been an obstacle. It's been an obstacle going through, back to several administrations now, and it continues to be one. So as you move forward, and this is sort of part of this, a roadmap for moving forward, this is, people are always asking me, how did you all do it? What was the secret to getting to where you are, to the record fund balance and record cash in the bank? And I had to sit down and think about that because it's a lot of things. It's very nuanced in some cases, so this is certainly more of a higher level thing. But as I sat down and thought about it, for probably a good 30 minutes or so, I tried to just break it down into some things, some tidbits that we could pass along to the new folks that are coming in, and this is what I came up with. We did a lot of streamlining of operations. Fleet consolidation, which we've talked about a lot, taking that down from 50 people to 23, we're saving over $3 million a year with better service. Shared services, combining accounts payable between the utility, combining fiscal officers over multiple departments makes the city more efficient, the work that's done, and you save more money. There are things like that that are still out there that we were looking at that certainly can be tackled by the next administration and the next city council. Ingenuity, not just, when you come across a problem, just don't throw resources at it necessarily. We try to figure out how we could work around it. What can we do to improve it without necessarily throwing more resources at it? Workers' comp is a great example of that. Back in 2011, when I started, we had, I think it was three successive years of about $5 million a year in workers' compensation charges. One of the first things that Mayor Houston had me do was to lead up a team of folks to try and determine how we could cut back on that. So we came up with a lot of different things, implementing light duty, training on how to work safer, getting more aggressive in defending claims was a big part of that. Several things, it was like this matrix. Anyway, since that time, workers' comp has been coming down, and now it averages around $1.5 to $2 million a year. So we're saving $3 million or so a year on workers' compensation, all because we just looked at the problem a different way. I encourage the new folks to do the same thing. During the pandemic, we couldn't hire officers. There was a shortage of, we couldn't hire them because there was no state police, there was no academy. But we were losing, and they were still retiring, they were still leaving. So how do we deal with that problem? Well, the folks put their head together, and they came up with doing 12-hour shifts. And that may have been temporary, but it certainly got us through a very, very difficult time, all because just thinking about how we can do things differently. I encourage people to continue to try and do that. Fiscal responsibility and stewardship. Sometimes you get tempted to do the flashy thing, like, oh, we should do this, this is great, you know, something with, something that's shiny, kind of like alderwoman's glasses over there, very shiny and sparkly. But sometimes you need to forego that and just do the right thing. Just do the things that make the most sense, like extra pension payments.
Get something like this.
Yes, sometimes you gotta use Alderman Donilon's glasses instead. But it's the right thing to do. This administration, this city council, has put more extra money into pensions than any time before in the city's history. Doing the right thing, when that money could have been used for something a little more shiny, a little more sparkly, but it was good fiscal responsibility and stewardship. Building reserves, I talked about that on the previous page. Built up reserves, why? So we could do good things with it. We can, like we're doing in FY '24, three new firehouses, lots of new equipment for police and fire and public works, lots of technology for police department to help them do what they do better, especially when you're talking about having fewer officers that are out there right now. Those are the types of things you can do if you save for the future, if you're thinking, again, could transition into the big picture. Don't look at things in one year. When you're budgeting, I encourage you all, think about multiple years. Look forwards, but look backwards. Think about what the history has shown us. What did we learn from the Great Recession? We learned we had to be ready for the next downturn because we knew it was not a matter of when or if, it was a matter of when, right? And we got it. We got a state budget, no two years, we got a pandemic. Did we lay off anybody? Did we brown out firehouses? Did we ask people to give back raises? Did we not give raises? We didn't do any of that. We didn't have to because we were prepared. All that happened in the Great Recession with the city, didn't happen during the pandemic because we were ready. We were thinking big picture, what can happen in the future? Let's be ready for it. And the two big things that are your biggest obstacles to maintaining the fiscal stability that you're inheriting are pension obligations and then employee costs. Employees are 80% of the corporate fund. I know one of the things that we talk about all the time is we inherited one, just one contract back in 2011. It was a five-year contract with one particular union. Over that one contract, the increase in salaries alone and of course associated benefits was 22% of the base. Just be careful as you're going through that. Which brings me to my last point. Be the villain. For 12 years, I think I've been the villain. I've been called lots of things, Prince of Darkness, Mean Guy, Things I Can't Say on TV, all because, all because my job was to say no. And the Mayor Houston and Mayor Langfeller reluctantly, very reluctantly, would say the word no. I had to take away his easy button at budget time that he always kept in there. We had a no button and a yes button. I had to hide his yes button. He kept hitting it too much. In fact, I think the battery went dead on it. So that thing had to go. But, but really, those simple things, if you continue to do those things, you're all gonna be fine, you're gonna be able to maintain the fiscal stability that you're getting now. If you start to stray from this, you will run into some rocky, rocky seas. So anyway, with that, that is all I have. I just want to say best of luck to you all, all the newbies, best of luck to the new mayor. And it has been a privilege to serve with all of you and your predecessors, and it certainly has been a privilege to serve the people of Springfield. Thank you.
Mayor, Alderman Fulgensley had to sign off, and he wanted me to give this message. He says, thanks to everyone. He's enjoyed his time here, and it was a pleasure to serve the citizens of Ward Four, and thanks to all of them.
Thank you.
Well, we can send Larry Rockford up here now, he's here.
Also, Mayor, one more thing. Public Works lost a very good servant this week, Darrell Jackson, affectionately known as Big Daddy. He was a good man and a dedicated employee, and I ask for a moment of silence for Darrell.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Chair will entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes at the April 18th, 2023 city council meeting and approve the minutes.
They'll move.
Second.
They're moving second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances into the record of this city council.
They'll move.
They're moving second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda into the record of the city council meeting.
They'll move.
Second.
They're moving second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
They'll move.
Second.
They're moving second, any discussion? All those in favor, motion vote yes. Those opposed, vote no, and the voting is now open. And the consent agenda passes, nine voting yes, none voting no. Agenda number 2022-384, 2022-463, 2023-001, 2023-00055, 2023-086, 2023-128, 2023-173, and 2023-175 remain tabled during committee. Is there any action on any of those? Next item on the agenda is 2023-179, a resolution referring a petition to the Springfield Planning and Zoning Commission for a public hearing and consideration proposing an amendment to Chapter 155, Section 155.106, all drive-up facilities. Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2023-179 on final passage.
They'll move.
Second.
They're moving second, any discussion? Been moved second, any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open. And the ordinance passes, nine voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is document number 2023-182, an ordinance authorizing a three-year extension for a lease agreement with the Springfield, Illinois African American History Foundation, doing business as the Springfield and Central Illinois African American History Museum for property located at 1440 Monument Avenue. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2023-182 on final passage.
We'll move.
Second.
Been moved second, discussion, all the women, purchase?
Thank you, Mayor. I think they wanted to brief us on what's going on or just share with us what they're doing.
Sure. If you'd like to come up, please. And state your name and position, we'd appreciate it.
Good evening. I'm Carolyn Farrar. I am the board president for the Springfield and Central Illinois African American History Museum. And this is?
I'm Nelo Mitchell, the executive director. Thank you for having us this evening.
And I want to thank the city, first of all, for your support over the many years that this museum first started as a foundation in 2006 and then became the African American History Museum in 2012. In 2016, the city gave us the opportunity to move into the, what was then the Funeral Museum. And we have found that as our home since then, and we have done amazing things there. We have cast an enormously wide footprint throughout Springfield and Central Illinois. I think you have followed us over the years. But let me just mention a few things. I've been board president for about two and a half years. Actually, I think it's been like 25 years, it seems like, but they tell me it's only been two and a half years. But since then, we have worked very diligently, along with an unbelievable board, fantastic volunteers, loyal and dedicated members to grow this museum. And our mission is to tell authentic stories about African American life in Springfield and Central Illinois, and through exhibits, education, collections, and programs to preserve, interpret, and celebrate African American history and culture. And let me just mention, one of the major exhibits that we do have at the museum is the complete story of the 1908 Race Riot. We took the original one that was done in, in 2008 at the Centennial commemoration of this event, and we have expanded it, grown it, and offered it again to the public. One of the things that's important about this is we keep that total story going on and alive as we have gone to support the city, the county, the NAACP, and the Illinois State Museum and others as we go with the transportation hub and the other programs that are offered to commemorate that here in our city, which of course was the beginning of the NAACP back in 1909, actually. We have many projects that we do have on the horizon. And one of the big things that we really wanted and knew to make our museum grow was to have an executive director. And we are so fortunate to have Ms. Nelo Mitchell as our, as she doesn't like to say new because it's our first, because we've never had an executive director. But one thing we learned in 2021, we participated in what's called the Management Assessment Program through the American Alliance of Museums, which is a federal, the guru of museums nationally. And one of the things they said, to grow, you must have an executive director. And we were fortunate enough to win a grant through the Institute of Library and Media and Museum Services of $189,000 over, over three years, which financed this, this position and also the training and growth of our board and our executive director. So that's huge. That is huge, and we're so excited about it. Another thing I want to mention briefly, too, is some of the things that we do with District Number 186. If you haven't been by the museum lately, we have had a wonderful art gallery of student art from 186, and we are working with Senator, no, Representative Brzezinski on her high school art project, which we are one of the hosts for that as well. We have now resurrected our African American History Summer Camp, which was an award-winning program back in 2017, took an unbelievable hiatus during COVID, but we were back last year, and we got rave reviews from many of our students, and we did receive sponsorship from the Springfield Memorial Foundation, and we do have some other support this year. The other thing I want to mention is the History Comes Alive program, which we do with tourism. We were so good that they sent a bus over to our place to bring people over there. And so we know it was a success, and we have a great lineup for this year, so we know we want you to come to the museum. But one of the things that we really want you to consider and to make sure you do tonight is to at least give us another three-year lease. And because we worked with the city over the last year and through the Department of Natural Resources, we were able to receive over $600,000 to renovate that building, which we plan to stay in for a long time, to consider the work we have done. So in that building, with this renovation, these renovation funds, we will increase the size of our exhibit area. We plan to have a gallery for the digitalization of the 1908 Race Riot, which we have worked with the Presidential Museum to get a $75,000 grant to put into one of those galleries that we are creating. And we also want to do more work on the Underground Railroad for the other gallery, which this grant will allow us to do. But one of the things, too, that were most important in this renovation is our community meeting room. We want to make this museum available all the time because now we don't have, it is not set up so that people can actually meet during the day because we have visitors and the museum itself is operable. But with this community meeting room, we have plans for this to be a place where people can come all the time. As our executive director will say, her phone rings off the hook for everybody that wants to come and, and share this building and to meet here and to be a part of it. So we want you to come out to the museum, but we also want you to make sure we are there at 1440 Monument Avenue to continue the work that we've done with the support at the rent we have and at the support as far as some of the maintenance things that we have in our lease. When we got the DNR grant, they actually asked us to get a 25-year lease from the city. And that's really what we really like, but we definitely got to get the three-year. So that's our second thing. So we hope that you will vote favorably in our, towards us.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Well, thank you very much and congratulations. Thanks for being here.
Mayor.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the ordinance, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes, nine voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is 2023-206, a resolution in support of a tax increment financing for emergency passage. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2023-206 on final passage.
So move.
Second.
Been moved second, any discussion? Yep, Alderman Hanar.
I'm sorry, could you explain a little bit about this, what, what the resolution does and, and what prompted it?
Yeah, what's prompted it is the state legislature, they did have language to change the TIF Act, and so it dilutes the, you know, the local home rule bodies, their authority. So the Illinois municipally asked all cities to come forward with a resolution just to support the legislation that's currently in place and don't change it.
Okay. And maybe just as information, we passed one, you may recall, last year at the same time because that bill was presented last year, then defeated, and now it's basically been presented again.
Alderman Donlan?
No, that was my question, Mayor. I just, this is a critical tool, we must keep it, so.
Any other discussion? All in favor, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes, 10 voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is 2023-207, authorizing execution of subrecipient agreement number 22-SR-006 with the Children's Museum Foundation Corporation, doing business as KidZim for emergency roof repairs at low, property located at 412 East Adams, utilizing the city's community development block grant funds in an amount not to exceed $88,410 for the Office of Planning and Economic Development for Emergency Passage. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2023-207 on final passage.
So move.
So.
And second, any discussion? All the women, purchase?
Yes, I think Director Leah would like to come up and just share what's going on.
Sure. If you'd state your name and position, that'd be great. Thank you.
Leah Wilson, Executive Director at KidZim. And I first want to thank Mayor Langfelder and all of the aldermen and women here and the city of Springfield for the support that has been provided to KidZim over many years as we have taken a dream that was about 14 years in the making, and then we opened this wonderful museum in 2018, survived COVID, and now we're here with a happy emergency. I know it's, you know, on the agenda for emergency passage, and it is a roof that's leaking. So it doesn't sound good, but actually, at the bottom of it is something good, and that is that we are positioning ourselves to expand into two storefronts that are connected to the building that we own. We own those spaces as well, and we are doing that so that we can do more with our steam programming. We have a wonderful partnership with District 186 to provide an educational experience that's very immersive for every second grader in the school district. We are closed Monday through Friday to do that, to function like a museum school. We, like the African American History Museum, received an IDNR grant as well. We were very fortunate to, to get that, to renovate those two spaces. Unfortunately, this spring, what was a kind of minor leak in the roof that sits on top of those spaces became more of a major leak, and we determined that it was necessary to replace that roof. And so, again, in conversation with Mayor, he suggested that we apply for this funding to be able to, to fix that roof, and then our IDNR funding can be used for the renovation of those two spaces and not have to be partially spent on, on roof repair. So that's, that's the short version of this, and I'm happy to entertain any questions you have.
All the women dissent.
Yes, thank you. I am in support of this, but because I was the chief of staff when this was administered on February 15th, I have to vote present, so I just wanted to explain that. I'm no longer at DNR, but that's the funding source, so understood. Thank you.
Alderman Conley?
And I am still at IDNR, very supportive of this. I think KidZim is doing some great work, but I unfortunately will have to vote present tonight.
Also understood. Thank you.
Alderman McMiniman?
Leah, I can vote yes for this, unlike my team.
All right.
And furthermore, is this a situation where your grant is set up that you have to spend the money from your own resources, and then you get reimbursed later? So if you spend city money for this, will you get reimbursed from the state, and then you can reimburse the city of Springfield?
So that's where things get wonderfully complicated, but I'll try to explain it the simplest way I can. So initially, when we applied for this grant, you know, the KidZim applied as the applicant, and then we asked if the city would be able to serve as a fiscal agent to provide the upfront funding for the project. And then when we get reimbursed, we reimburse the city. And so that's piece number one, and I think that item is still outstanding. I know that we've been working through some, some paperwork back and forth with IDNR to, to make that happen. So that's actually something else that we would be seeking so that we would be, you know, repaying that full amount to the city. I think, and Mayor Langfelder, please jump in here if you would like. The second part of what happened here is when we applied for the grant and, and now, you know, that we are seeking the bids, the bids are coming in higher than the requested amount, which is not a huge surprise given that, you know, costs for all kinds of things have, have gone way up. And the mayor was interested in finding a way to help us close the gap. And I think this was what you came up with, that we would get a grant for the roof portion of this project that we would not repay. But then if the city does agree to be the fiscal agent for the renovation piece of the grant, which is the $355,400, that we would repay that, that full amount to the city. I hope that clarifies.
Kind of does, but I won't ask any more questions, so thanks a lot.
Yeah, actually, it's community development block grant funds. I think Krista's here, if she wants to jump in. But we have set aside funds for public facilities, this is definitely one of those. And so it's separate, it's separate from the DNR grant. The DNR grant, what we're trying to do is become the fiscal agent that's traditional, where the city receives the grant funds from the state, and then we can disperse it as bills come due. What they want us to do is essentially front the money and then get reimbursed by applying through the state. So it's a little bit different from what we're used to. So that's what we're trying to do is Donna Devlandis, the grant coordinator, writer for Springfield, is working with DNR, the fiscal entity, to try to get it where we can be the true fiscal agent, where we do receive the grant funds like we do with Public Works, and then as work's done, we disperse those funds. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And this does need eight votes to pass, right?
You're not voting.
Courtesy.
Mercy.
Then go right back into.
Does it go for regular passage?
Yes. You may recall, this is an occasion where there's an emergency action for an ordinance requires a two-thirds majority. If it fails to get it, it simply stays on regular process, didn't get early passage.
Are you voting, Sean? Thank you.
You can vote for Sports Complex, you can vote for this, ma'am.
Alderman Williams, you need further clarification or would that help or no?
You know, this, this project is one of those projects, like many in my ward, that, that all the women votes against, and, and, you know, my people suffer. My project suffers. And so what I'm doing is, is voting opposition, and I'm hoping that her ward and her people start making her think about her votes when she takes away things like summer youth program.
So you're going to harm the kids.
Yes, yes, I am, just like you harmed you, summer youth program, no problem. So that's, that's my explanation, Mayor.
Alderman Gregory?
Yes. You know, I'd just like to respond to Alderman McMiniman. You know, I, I was the original no vote on the Sports Complex, but, you know, I've, I've been in sports a very long time, I host tournaments, I've won this city's very award. So, you know, it took some, some measures to, to get me to vote for that, and it was the right decision. One thing about me is, is, is bad as I don't want to vote for it, it's about kids. And I can't fight for my kids and what we need over here and punish others. And that's just how I am, as bad as I don't want to vote for it, trust me. But I'm going to do the right thing, like I always say.
And I don't know if Krista would come up and explain, I don't know if there's any time-sensitive issues with the funding at all, but, and I don't know if there's any, I guess with the emergency roof repair, if there's any dire need for that. Because what would happen is within two weeks, they could vote on it again. So that's what we're dealing with, this two weeks delay. So I don't know if there's any issues with that, Krista, from HUD standpoint and expanding funds or anything of that nature?
There's no issue with it, the environmental is already done, it's ready to go. As far as, the only issue that they will have is possibly those bids expiring. That's one of the reasons why we pushed hard to get this in as quickly as possible, is because those bids would be expiring. And if the bids expire, then they have to go through the whole rebidding process again. And if the bids expire, then they have to go through the whole rebidding process again. So, and with this being spring, the weather is just gonna get worse, and the damage could get further. And then now we're looking at the roof possibly costing more, exceeding, you know, the ten percent change order and whatnot. So I think it's imperative that it does go through now.
Alderman Donlin?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I know we're in the middle of a vote, so it's kind of unique to get an opportunity to talk at this state of the game. But I will say a couple of things. Just having experience with public buildings that are damaged and damaged from hail and leaky roofs and so forth, the longer you wait, the more damage and costly they can get, even by days and hours. It's that critical. So I would encourage all those who are considering voting no or present to consider the needs. You know, obviously, I can't predict the future, but it would need six votes in two weeks. Two weeks, we could have rain, we could have problems. The bid thing's a whole different issue. I spoke with the director earlier about those, knowing that when they do indeed expire, that they are going to be more. It's just the nature of the beast. So I would encourage a yes vote for the community and a yes vote for basically fiscal reasons.
Alderman McMenammon?
Mr. Mayor, I think Alderman Fulgenzie wants to get back on the city council.
Sure.
And cast a vote.
Alderman Fulgenzie would like to register his vote as a yes for the Kids Museum.
Thank you.
Do we have to re-?
He did once.
Okay. Okay. So Alderman McMenammon, or Alderman Fulgenzie? Yes.
They're cheating, so you should cheat.
Okay. Very good.
You know I'm right.
I'll let you, I'll let him say it. Alderman, go ahead and make your vote.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman.
Thank you.
So the ordinance passes eight, voting yes, three voting present. Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion to suspend the rules in place on first reading agenda number twenty twenty-three dash two zero eight. An ordinance authorizing a contract with David L. Brun and Cheryl K. Brun for the purchase of Right Away located at fourteen zero four East North Grand Avenue in the amount of thirty-five thousand five hundred dollars and closing costs in the amount of one thousand five hundred dollars.
Mr. Mayor, point of order. I can't hear because of others talking.
And for a total amount not to exceed thirty-seven thousand dollars relating to the Springfield Rail Improvement Project Usable Segment Six A for the Office of Public Works. Chair will entertain a motion.
So move to entered into the docket.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to suspend the rules in place on first reading agenda number twenty twenty-three dash two zero nine. Ordinance authorizing a contract with Cheryl K. Brun and Cheryl, also known as Cheryl K. Roland, for the purchase of Right Away located at thirteen forty East North Grand Avenue in the amount of thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars, closing costs in the amount of one thousand five hundred dollars, and for a total amount not to exceed thirty-nine thousand dollars relating to the Springfield Rail Improvement Project for the Office of Public Works. Chair will entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to suspend with the rules in place on first reading agenda number twenty twenty-three dash two ten. Ordinance authorizing execution of a professional services agreement with Crawford, Murphy &amp; Tilly, Inc. for the design of the new streets and traffic facility, landscape and compost facility, and salt dome in an amount not to exceed one million two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the Office of Public Works.
So move.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to suspend with the rules in place on first reading agenda number twenty twenty-three dash two eleven. Ordinance to increase the number of Class Two A liquor licenses by one for Conn's Hospitality Group Incorporated doing business as Trish and Mary's Pub for the business located at one zero seven West Cook Street. Chair will entertain a motion.
So move.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to suspend with the rules in place on first reading agenda number twenty twenty-three dash two twelve. Ordinance authorizing various inter-agency budgetary transfers to reconcile end-of-year budget levels with fiscal year twenty twenty-three expenses for the Department of Budget, Office of Budget and Management. Chair will entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Last item is.
Thank you.
To entertain a motion to suspend with the rules in place on first reading agenda number twenty twenty-three dash two thirteen. An ordinance authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of five million three hundred thousand dollars for the year-end reconciliation for fiscal year twenty twenty-three for the Office of Budget, Office of Budget and Management.
So move.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Is there any unfinished business coming before the council? Thank you. We do have household hazardous waste this Saturday, and signups still available, so you can go on the city's website, springfield dot IL dot US, or call Public Works at two one seven seven eight nine two two five five. And then also, we had a popular place related had closed on that with Ida to start the forty-four million dollar redevelopment in Board Three. So congratulations for everybody's support on that project. Is there any new business coming before the city council? Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Gregory.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I just want to say two things, and one is unfortunately a somber moment, but I just want to, you know, speak about Darryl Jackson from our city garage. He did pass, a really good guy. When I came into office, that was one of the first people that helped me with my first cleanup. And, you know, he, you know, been with us a long, long time. They called him Big Daddy, and, you know, all the guys in the garage really, really loved this man. And, you know, the last time I talked to him was in March, and all he cared about, and I don't know the circumstance, but all he cared about was that grandson of his. And that's all he talked about. And he was sending some information about a fundraiser for him. So, you know, I hope as a city, we keep supporting that family. And, you know, I definitely hope we can have a moment of silence for Mr. Jackson as, you know, a employee of ours that, you know, we lost, that worked hard for us. If we could do that.
Or if there's ways that they can. I don't know if they have a GoFundMe page or anything of that nature, just call Public Works.
Memorial luncheon tomorrow with our Public Works staff at the garage. They did have a fundraiser for his grandson last Sunday, and then you still can contribute, and I can share the information.
Okay.
Will you send that to Tim Griffin for us, please?
I will. Thank you.
Thank you.
And my last thing is, you know, we got some people leaving, and, you know, for somebody like me, you know, I ain't like you two. You two as well, polished people. And, you know, I thank Christian DeSensio, Katie, and you guys have all seen me up here arguing and things. But I won't tell, I won't say why I thank her, because she knows, and I appreciate you, and thank you. Mr. John, he's not on the phone no more, but I appreciate him, because when he does speak, and he doesn't speak a lot, but we listen, and. So I appreciate you, Mr. John, for helping me out with the Ambedestra House. That is a special project for our community, and it was his voice that spoke up to push that thing through. And finally, you know, they read off a lot of accomplishments of yours. And one that I'll remember, and, you know, from the seat that I represent, you know, Frank McNeil, you know, helped bring that lawsuit into this formal government that we have today. And it was this mayor who made it possible for three African Americans to be up here, you know. And that is a special time, especially for somebody like me. And I thank you for that. And it hasn't been easy. You know, for me, and I know it hasn't been easy for him, you know, getting into things, and he still stood by me and still take pictures with me when everybody else run away. When everybody else run away.
I think I have the upper hand on maybe, maybe we'll have to have a fundraiser boxing match. How's that? Wouldn't that be fun? You think people come out and watch us?
I promise Alice I'm done.
Alice has thoughts on that.
But in all seriousness, you know, I thank you for that. And, you know, we, you know, these elections is hard, is my first one. But I will say I look forward to working with everybody, the new council, the new mayor, and keep moving for what we need to do for the East Side, so thank you.
Well, appreciate that. And then a couple of items. One, before we sign off here, I guess, is there any, oh, Alderman of purchase, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Downtown First Fridays are back, and we're kicking off this Friday, May fifth, and we're having a plant party. Stores will be open and extended until eight PM, and various participating businesses will be planted through their merchandise. So we encourage everyone, including my colleagues, to come down and participate with us. And then the last thing I just want to say is, this is towards Alderman Williams. Like, I really hope, over these next four years, that we can all come together, because we're the ones sitting up here fighting and looking while everybody else is being quiet and watching us. And you're sitting over here mumbling, you and Sean are talking, and I have to sit here and listen to that. When you calling and cussing, I have to be quiet and just listen to you all. So when you have something to say and we need to work together, just come and talk to me. That's all. Instead of you doing it like you all are doing it when we're up here talking and people are voting. That's all I ask for over the next four years.
I ain't said nothing. That was a conversation between me and Roy. Now don't get me started.
Alderman Conley?
Thank you, Mayor. On a different note, I would like to, we have Chief Blau here tonight. I would like to extend a thanks from myself, from the people who've reached out to me, just expressing gratitude for the work that, for the well-trained work that the Springfield Fire Department was able to provide yesterday for one of the worst traffic accidents I've ever seen, I've ever seen. The pictures are horrifying. I know people in the community are very deeply touched by what happened there, and prayers have been going out for not just the lives who were lost, their families, but the people who were injured and who's lived through that. My son reached out to me, a friend of his was in that massive pileup. Fortunately, he's okay. But it was, it was good, and I know that people appreciated knowing that our well-trained team was down there, that they were able to address, you know, what could have been a very, potentially very hazardous fire. We don't know what was, I don't know what was in the tankers that went up, but just want to. Bye, John.
Thank you, John. Everybody says goodbye.
Again, Chief, if you could, just share, share the thanks from this community and our appreciation for the work that firefighters do. And I know you just, you're hesitant to come up because you got called out for being too chatty, but that's all right.
I think that that was a mistake on everyone's part.
I was just a mistake on a few people's part. I'm looking at you.
No, our people went down there, and they did great work. We had over twenty of our folks that went down there. It was, it was zero visibility conditions. We sent our hazmat team, and then we ended up having to send several of our suppression folks down there as well. They kept hundreds, if not thousands, of gallons of hazardous materials from flowing into a nearby creek, which is always great news. They were able to put out a semi-load of batteries that were on fire and a tanker full of hazardous material that was also on fire. Cut several people out of cars. It was horrific, and all this in conditions that you couldn't see your hand in front of your face. Our people did marvelous work. We had a lot of partners down there, obviously, lots of small-town fire departments that did awesome work as well. And unfortunately, everybody didn't make it, but a lot of people did because of the hard work that our people and some of the other people in the nearby areas were willing to put in.
Thank you. And when we, when we put money into the budget, when we talk about choices that we make up here for the training that your department does for constantly staying sharp and up on skills and having the right tools and equipment, this is what it's for.
Money well spent, yes.
Yeah. So thank, please, much appreciation. I've heard from a number of people who are just obviously praying for everyone who was involved in that wreck, but also very grateful to our fire department that you were able to be so responsive.
I'll pass it along. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Alderman Williams?
Thank you. Yes, hon. Yeah, thank you. One, thank you, Ann. That, you know, I don't often get this way with her, but that was beautiful. I appreciate you for saying that, that.
Well, let's leave on a positive note then.
Yeah, that was kind of like, you know, I just got to give you credit. That was beautiful, and I appreciate you for having those thoughts. You stole a lot of my thunder, but we did get it done. And to my guy, Joe, you wouldn't mention, I just want to say twelve years of service. Thank you. You taught me to don't mind being the only vote, be the only no vote. Don't mind, always, you always told me, always consider the merits of the situation. I still get immature sometime and don't, but for the most part, I try to practice that, and I'm going to miss you. And Mayor, you know you, my guy, and I'm gonna miss you. I thank you for my appointment. And I thank you for supporting me during this past election. I enjoy supporting you, and we try. You're teaching me as of this moment right here. You're teaching me that we have to move forward, that I have to put on a hat to support the new mayor, and I'm going to do that. I mean, it's a new, a new start, and we're going to do this. As far as all the woman purchases issues, kids are kids. Doesn't matter if it's Kidzium, if it's the youth summer program that I wanted, which she sleeps well at night saying no, broadband no, you know. So tonight, I just try to express myself in an issue that I know is coming back with the right votes. I mean, I knew it's going to happen, but I'm trying to send a message that we need to be a little sensitive sometime. Everything can't be about downtown. And just because it's downtown, we have to do it, but I get to say no to kids on the East Side. We have to stop that. So that's all I was doing. I stand by my vote, because we're all the women, all the men, and we can vote any way we please. And tonight, I decided to be a non-vote. I didn't vote yes, I didn't vote no. That was my right, and I stand by that. Thank you.
Can I say something?
Sure. Or Alderman Donlin then, Alderman Purchase.
Why don't you let Alderman, Alderman Purchase go first?
Sure.
And I'm done after this. I respect your vote. It wasn't that. It was what you were saying. You were saying the BS word over here. You were saying, I'm playing games. I got to sit here and listen to you say that and not say anything back to you. That's what I'm talking about. Just having some respect up here. That's all.
Oh, I don't know if I can respond, or if I need to wait until.
We'll just go with Alderman Donlin.
Well, why don't I just, why don't I just withdraw my desire to speak for a few moments?
You don't like being in the middle of it, do you?
I don't mind being in the middle of it.
Alderman Williams.
Yes, so.
I'm sorry, Alderman DeSensio, Alderman DeSensio, then Alderman Williams.
I would encourage this council, the next council, to try to get along, to try to treat each other with respect, both sitting up at this horseshoe and away from this horseshoe, because we're all just human beings, just trying to do the best we can in life and for the people we represent. That's why we signed up for this job. It's not an easy job. We all have interests we want to protect. But the easy thing we can do is come up here and be respectful of each other. That's the easy thing we can do. And that's the very least we can do, and we all deserve that.
Alderman Williams?
Yes, I'll just say this. We're all adults. This sensitivity game, you know, or if you're, if I've done anything to offend anybody, I'm sorry. But I'm going to roll my eyes. I'm going to make my, I'll try not to be hurt. I will say that. But we grownups. We're adults up here. We got to put on some thick thin sometimes. If you overhear something about a vote or something, I'm sorry if I offend you. But that's just the way I operate. Thank you.
Any other new business? Alderman Donlin, he's back up. Alderman Donlin.
Well, I did have something I wanted to say, and I am still going to say it, but I will remind everyone, something I said a few weeks ago, and I guess it played out again this evening, is it seems that when certain individuals, and most of the time, it is when the women in this room speak, people are mumbling under their breath, they're saying something about them. Again, I heard some things a few weeks, I didn't hear it this evening, but I heard some things a few weeks ago that were just atrocious, and we do need to be respectful. We also need to learn, and I'm, maybe I'm included in this at times, I don't know, but when you lose a vote, you got to move forward and forget about it and move forward, because there are other votes coming up, and they're coming up the next week. And we do all need to work together. I'm confident we can. But on a different note, I want to thank the individuals that are leaving the city council for all your hard work, your dedication, the time you spent at this horseshoe. council for all your hard work, your dedication, the time you spent at this horseshoe, the time you spent working for the city of Springfield. Mayor, I've seen you sit in that chair and just get beat up by people at the podium at times, whether or not. And I thought to myself, I thought to myself, man, I'm glad I'm not in that chair. But Mayor, in all seriousness, and Alderwoman DeSenzio and Alderman Fulgenzie, we're going to miss you all, but I hope you remember that we we all, excuse me, Alderman McMenamin, I can't forget him either. We're going to miss you all, and we wish you nothing but the best. And just remember, we're always a phone call away if you have any advice or things you don't like that you're seeing.
Great.
And on that note, finally, just a reminder for everyone that this Friday at 2:00 PM is the inauguration of your new city officials. The event this year will be held at the Bank of Springfield Center here downtown. All are welcome to attend, and thank you.
Then also, special thanks to Corporation Council Zirkle. I know he doesn't like the limelight too much, but.
Jay-Z.
Yep, that's right. But, you know, he's he was my father's corporation counsel, actually brought him back. He broke in under Mayor Houston as an attorney, then left. My father brought him back, his corporation counsel actually wrote the code as it is today. He got upset when I called him the grandfather of the city code, didn't he? When I first introduced him, so we'll go out that way, too. But he's done a great job with regards to, and that's what the attorneys are for, protecting the city. I mean, that's what he does. He looks after the best interest of the city. As we move forward, you know, I think someone had said it, and it's difficult to do, especially when I was over the county board, my father, that was my greatest mentor, that's why I referenced him, you know, that we had an issue, I think it was, we were consolidating at that time, it might have been, I don't know if it was the shelter, or it might have been the election commission, but he said, you have to put on your county hat, you're a county official, even though I love the city. And that rang like a bell, and that goes to the new ones coming in, you always have to wear the city hat, because that's who you represent, is the city. And the other thing, I think it was brought up, I think Alderman Purchase brought this up, is hopefully, next four years different from this four years, because the election's over. The election's over, now you represent everybody. So it shouldn't be if they were for you or against you, we're all here to support one another, because we're all here for Springfield. That's why I pledged my support for Mayor-elect Busher. Just to clarify, I didn't vote for, but I will support her moving forward. But that's what it's all about, is supporting one another, because, like I said, my favorite favorite saying of Abraham Lincoln is, government of the people, by the people, for the people. I think the majority of the time, we really practice that, and even though we may disagree up here and argue and things of that nature, that can be healthy, because you can get a better resolution, as long as you do it respectfully. That's what it's all about as we move forward. But really, I'm going to close with two things. One is my family, my wife Billy's here, and we have a grandbaby, she's three years old, and, you know, I'll be spending more time with her, of course, and doing more items that been neglected, and I think all elected officials neglect their families, should find a right balance in life. And I very encourage the Mayor-elect to do that, because I didn't always do that. I sunk myself into this job 24/7, and that's not always the best, and so it's good to have that balance in life. But the other thing I will say is, aside from the family sacrifices, we appreciate[1720.25]